...at all, or not enrolled in the music programs at all. We've had people still come through. We do have had a number of students who have an IP or a 504. We recognize as student of the month, so we just... There are a variety of backgrounds of students who are recommended for student of the month.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Berryman, one more time also, and I can help out with this one. The question was, why does the district not provide middle school students with a scheduled recess? I was a middle school principal for fifteen years at Emory Markel in the Southwestern School District. After lunch, lunch was a half hour segments. If kids finished early, and most of them did, they did have an area where we could play basketball, four square, football in the field, some tennis and so on. But we did not have in the morning or the afternoon a scheduled recess at the middle level. I'm not saying other districts don't do that. Dr. Berryman, anything else to add to that?
So I don't really know the history of when we had it and when we didn't have it at the middle school. The only thing I can say right now, the reason they don't have it at the middle school is the only place for the kids to go. Like, so if they finished lunch early and wanted to go outside, it's in the courtyard, which is surrounded by classrooms. So it's really hard to have kids out, well, there's nowhere to play ball in there, because it's like stone and bench and stuff like that. So it's not even really conducive for recess. I know that at the building project, the middle school and high school are together, there is a courtyard, so there may be some availability with that. But again, we have to hope to see what schedules are going to be like and things like that.
Thank you. Is Peter Klein here tonight? I wanted to thank him for this question. What would you, as the acting superintendent, like to see changed about the relationship between the school district and the community? I love that question, and I appreciate that question. I have to be, listen, I'm going to be very honest about this. Board members, if you tell me not to come back on Friday and fire me, I'll be okay. But here it is. Last Friday, I looked at several sheets of paper that had invoices relative to our legal counsel that we're paying. It's absolutely criminal, in my mind, that we're spending so much money to react to right to no request, or lawsuit, or any other things where we have to consult with our legal counsel. Stump and whatever the last name is. It used to be Stock and Leader. They've been bought out. But that money that could be used for programmatic issues for kids and things here that also might help us, you know, to keep taxes under control, we are bleeding money and making the legal pitch people, the lawyers, rich. And it's unacceptable. I don't know how else to say it. It's unacceptable. So, whatever the board can do, whatever you can do to minimize that. I realize there are times where we have to consult with legal counsel. I get that. And good boards follow the advice of their legal counsel to stay out of trouble. That's a good thing to do. All right? I get that. But the amount of money for a district this size to allow bleeding and going to people that already have, that are very affluent, all right, it just makes absolutely no sense to me. And I'm sorry if I'm yelling at you, but I'm yelling at you, all right? And I'm yelling at you all. I'm yelling at everybody here in this room. That needs to stop somehow, some way. And if I, I've asked the Lord, Lord, let me be a tool to help this group get in a better trajectory towards eliminating that bleeding of finances and resources that could be used to help kids.
Yes.
Period. That's what I have to say about that. And I thank Peter Klein for that question. I was hoping he'd be here, so I can thank him personally. I'm sorry to get fired over. That's it. Dr. Berryman, there was one, and Mrs. Ewan, maybe you want to answer this one. It was a question about why the tennis courts and lights on the tennis court. You want to take that one?
I mean, you can start. I was part of figuring out what went into the building project and what didn't. And at the time, the tennis courts, you know, were by the road. We had just resurfaced them. They said they had to be removed. And then people said we want our tennis courts, but instead of just leaving those, they said the parking lot has to go there, and the tennis courts were moved. We were trying for a grant with the U.S. Tennis Association. We were denied that grant, and that's why the new tennis courts don't have lights, as far as I know. Can we ask our new athletic director to look into other grants to try to get lights? I guess that's early on. Is that what you were going to say?
Yes. Do the students play tennis in the yard? What's the reason?
Well, well, the children can use them too, but go ahead.
What was your question?
Do the students play in the yard?
Yep, here's the issue. In PIA double A with schools that have a tennis team, and we do, a guys and girls tennis team, with only four courts, there are, I believe there's seven matches. I think it's four, four singles, three doubles, or it's five, it's a four-three or a five-two format. Here's what happens then. Many times, these matches are very close and competitive, and they go pretty long. So what happens then is, as soon as the match is over, the other group comes on and they play. And if it's the second group that comes on, many times, because of the time change and early spring and late fall, the daylight diminishes pretty quickly. So that's where lights would be helpful. What happens then if you don't finish the match and it's not decided, then you have to come back the next day and play again. And sometimes with the weather, those things get scheduled back to back to back and so on.
The only issue with getting a grant to get lights is we've got pickleball lines now, and the grants don't allow pickleball lines.
So there's an issue.
Look, our board president, Wen A. Wall, we'll track him down, but at this point, those were the questions that we had in advance. So now comes the fun part. Now comes the fun part. What we would like you to do, and listen, our board members are here. If you have something that you would like to direct to a certain board member, again, if as long as it's something that they are allowed to speak about or whatever, I'm hopeful that they'll just be very authentic and honest and try to answer your questions. So, and if you, if you would just stand up, just say your first name and shout out your question, and then board members, I think that would help, as long as that fan's on, it would help if you stood up and projected your response. And I will be, I will be the police officer as to whether it's a legal question that we can answer or not, okay? Is that fair enough? All right. With that, who's going first? Autumn, right?
I just want to reiterate, I agree with the iReady. Sorry. I agree that the iReady definitely has made a big transition for our community compared to what we had in the first, which were all after, which was why a lot of them went to the public class, because looking at those, it wasn't active. The iReady is definitely quite, some of the grades was finally in sixth grade, even sixth grade is a very low. What I...
She's saying iReady has really helped.
I agree, but reiterating to that question, my work transition was the fact that our kids come from fifth grade with no homework. No homework, that's graded, so you get one math worksheet that is not required. That was, now this was last year. Now, I know they just told me, this was the last time. Both of my kids struggled coming in, so my thing is, is helping bridge that gap. So that kids come from not having those abilities, just coming in because it's two sixth grade, and expect that seven teachers can keep track of their assignments and have to juggle everything, carry everything, what they do in the middle school, but to juggle, because that's where the mental health came in, because we're also stressing.
Autumn, I appreciate your comments there. My grandkids rarely have homework. I always had homework. Doesn't seem fair. And the other thing is, Mr. Horn dor, for anybody that didn't have their homework in sixth grade, we lined up in the hallway, and he had a paddle with three holes in it. In the seventies, in the seventies, they did things a little differently in twenty-five, the twenty-first century. Thank you.
Well, no, that's the thing is, like, we're not giving anything.
But I would agree with you. I'm a big fan of iReady. I'm a big fan of formative assessments that help teachers adjust their instruction based upon the deficits that their kids have. Next question.
Hello. My name is Jamie. I am a parent and a taxpayer and all that great stuff. Now, thank you that we know what the Sunshine Act is and how it applies to this board, and that the state of Pennsylvania gives us the laws to follow. What can we do to stop the madness? So that's what we need to figure out, and I'm sure you already are. So what is this board doing to stop this? Because it is a drain and it is a waste, and I love your passion. The word is passion. You're passionate? I'm passionate. I haven't been as involved as I should have been all these years. I have two amazing kids that came up through this school. It's an amazing school, amazing teachers. Most of you don't get paid. Most of you definitely don't get paid. But you come because you care about this district. You care about this district, and you care about this district. So what can we do to stop the madness? There's got to be a lawyer that can serve the stop the madness, because now we know what this is. Now we know how to behave like adults, so let's behave like adults, because if you don't, you're going to have to start paying these fees back. How about that? Amen? So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much. I appreciate the board. I appreciate what you do. I appreciate the parents and the community that come, but you're all here for a reason because you care, but the madness must stop. There you go.
I think I love this woman.
We're married.
So am I for over forty minutes. Next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I agree. I agree with everything that you said. I'm hopeful that members of the community and all board members can come alongside the board and partner with the board and deposit things that the district is trying to do rather than work against us. So I appreciate your comments.
We're just trying to follow policies strictly and the law strictly, so that...
Yeah, but your policies don't follow the law. You are wrong, and we all know you're wrong.
I am not.
All I'm saying is, you know, it's not about, it's not about you being wrong. I apologize. There are laws...
Anybody that feels that the woman sitting here is draining the account, please raise your hand.
I don't care. I don't care.
No.
They do not follow the law. You do not know what you're talking about. You have not read the lawsuit. Please do not come out.
You are misinterpreted.
Time out, time out. Time, time out.
So it would be good to force a one person at a time.
Thank you.
And that person stands up. And Dr. Moyer, you have the best voice, I think, for projecting. I would ask that you, as much as possible, summarize what that person has said so that all of us can participate.
Will do, will do.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
Can I speak?
Yep. Were you done with that response?
I think we're done with the response. I really, I really apologize that there's not better sound. We do have...
The air is off now, so that's...
If you're able to, we have, if you're able to come closer, we have a bunch of seats towards the front. But I do apologize about the sound inconvenience that we've been experiencing. Hopefully now, things will be more than...
Thank, thank you. Next, yes, sir.
My name's Luca Sigmund, taxpayer and parent of students at school. Dr. Moyer and I had the first responder too, and I think the street first responder day. Today's first responder day. So I'm going to address the body as a whole, right? I'm going to address the board, and I'm going to address the citizens, okay? We're all here for a reason. We packed this school, right, well, this auditorium. There's a lot more people than there usually are at board meetings, all right? I want to remind everybody, because we just had an example of it, and I'm not attacking anybody. The standard that we hold our students to in school, if what just happened would have happened in school, our students would have been in the principal's office, and the parents would have been called, okay? The school has a zero tolerance for bullying. That goes for the board, and that goes for the community, okay? If we want to work together towards a common goal, we can't sit here and attack anybody, okay? Because as soon as you attack somebody, they go on the defensive, and you're not going to get anything done, okay? In the career that I work with, work in, if I attack somebody, we're done. We're not, we're not getting anything done, okay? So I want to remind the board, and I want to remind the community, we're here for a common goal, right? We might not like what they have to say, they might not like what you have to say, but that's okay, right? Because if we all had the same opinion, we'd live in a very boring world, and we'd get nothing done. So I want to remind everybody, we're here for a common goal tonight. So if you want to speak, speak. Listen. Speak. Listen. Speak. It's that simple. We can say what we need to say, and we can go home. We don't have to have a beer when we leave here. We don't have to have juice boxes together, but we need to listen, because if we listen to the people, and if the people listen to the board without being on the defensive, we can all come to a common goal. So I have to say.
Thank you. Next.
So I'm Ally McCall, and I, my question is, this staff handle, specifically like incidents that happen.
Ally, I think I can answer that one.
Yeah, I did, I did submit the question. So I feel...
I would just say that we had a disciplinary hearing, or what's called a louder mill hearing. I got a resignation. This person understands that their career is over in education, maybe if they're in another field, that, you know, that they can make a comeback. I have encouraged him to not allow this situation to define the rest of his life. He's sixty-five years old. I'm hoping, I'm a big believer in second and third chances, and I've dealt with people, including a family member that deals, that struggles with addiction. So I'm hoping they can bounce back, but it won't be here in Littlestown or any other school.
So actually, if I'm not talking about this current...
I'm sorry. I should be a better listener, is what I should do.
So...
I'm sorry. What are you talking about?
Are you going to speak more generally? It's a general, but I have a very individual situation that I, as a parent, feel was not absolutely addressed.
In that case, you need to, you need to go to that person, that principal, and if you don't get satisfaction, you need to come to Dr. Berryman or me.
So with that being said, I have always came to the superintendent. I followed up with emails. I have several emails that were unanswered, you know, from the, not from you.
Ally, I can't speak to that. I can only control myself, not what other people have done, but I guarantee you, I'd be happy to meet with you, and we'll see what we can do to help resolve it. I can't, I can't promise it's going to be exactly what you would like, but I promise I will listen, meet with you, and I will attempt to make a resolution.
Yeah, because I feel like, I really feel that the students, in the middle school in particular, for some, are held to a higher standard than the teachers. And it can't just be like the one person is a general. And then I also am curious about the reward system in middle school. Has anybody had checked on this, or, you know, did any research on the reward system in middle school?
I think, what's the name of it?
PBIS.
The PBI, yeah. PBIS, what's that stand for again?
Positive behavior.
Positive behavior. I do know this, Ally. It's been, that program is pretty research-based, and it's used by a lot of districts across the Commonwealth. I'm not saying I...
So, in the middle school?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
And elementary as well. My granddaughter on Friday is being rewarded through the PBI system as the amazing warrior at James Geddes Elementary School. That's part of their PBI as system, all right? I'm hoping that, you know, Littlestown is trying to execute it properly in the way it ought to be.
Because it's not really a one-size-fits-all...
I agree.
...system. And I feel like kids that have, do not have the ability to test well. That's one of the criteria, and then their grades fall behind, so therefore, they lose the reward. You know, at the end of the year, they did three years in the building and didn't get any type of reward. Like, I don't feel like this is a one-size-fiddle.
Ally, I would agree with you a hundred percent. I will say with this, where I might disagree with you to some degree. From what I've observed here at Littlestown and the other districts that I'm familiar with, and being in the classroom a lot, you almost have to make an effort to get less than a C in most of the core content areas. I mean, you basically have to be punching the clock and not doing anything to get a D or an F. Now, I don't know about your particular situation, but usually with PBIS, if you're getting a C or better, the academic component of that is met.
Yeah, I just, yeah, there's a little bit more that...
I understand, I understand. Thank you. Thank you. Next.
She was, I guess.
Oh, you beat her.
You can go.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sherri Anderson. I had a few things to say on Monday, and I was cut off after the first sentence, so I'm going to approach this with a question. I feel and hope all the school board members are part of the board because they value the safety of our children. However, I have questions. If a school board member didn't value the safety of the students outside the school district, do you think she'll be able to support the safety of our children when she votes on policies but can't show up for a forum board meeting?
Who would like that?
I don't know her schedule, so I don't know why she's not here, so I can't answer any, I can't answer.
Neither of them are.
We invited all the board members, that's all I can say, and actually, I was pretty happy that we got seven out of nine. That's not too bad. But thanks for the question.
Can you answer the first part?
Next. Yes, sir.
There's one...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay, so I'm going to read it again.
Can I summarize it real quick?
I have a question. It says, if a school board member didn't value the safety of the students outside the school district, do you think she'll be able to support the safety of our children when she votes on policies?
Does anybody want to take that one on the board?
I don't know how she wasn't, I don't know how...
Because you didn't let me speak when, at the last board meeting. You don't know.
We had, we had to follow policy.
You weren't.
It's not...
Ms. Anderson, I think that the question you're asking is a question that is for, is for the voters to decide.
Yes.
Board members are elected officials.
I get that.
And the voters are the people that determine who should and should not be in these elected offices. We, as the board, have no say-so.
I get that. I just want the voters to know that these people are not good people for our kids to make decisions for policies. This is not okay.
Next.
Me?
Yes.
I'm Sandy. I live in the district. I may be going out on a limb here, because I'm a little confused about what didn't happen earlier with our gentleman here, you know, trying to make sure everybody is working together. And like, I go to the meetings, they're not fun. I'm not saying that they should be fun, but it's confusing, there's a lot of tension, there's... Is there a mediator that we can bring in that's going to be cheaper than our lawyer to at least feel like, and the other part, I feel like there's a lot of stuff out there in social media that maybe is inflaming things that it may be accurate, may not be accurate, and nobody knows what is and what isn't. So can we have, is that something that will work, so that...
Sandy, I think that's, I think that's a good question. I would just say this, and I've said it many times over when consulting with boards and so on. Generally, the majority of the board votes for officers. The officers right now are, you know, Nick, Jeannie, and Steve. They've been voting in by the majority of the board. Maybe not unanimous. They would be responsible for making sure that we're following Robert's rules, responsible for making sure that people keep executive session confidential information confidential. I've had issues with that with other boards in the past, in my experiences and so on. But basically, as was stated before, it's very difficult, all right, to remove rogue board members or board members who aren't really playing nicely or aren't being team players and so on. I will say this about this board, compared to other boards that I'm familiar with. This board, these people show up, they're passionate about what they do, they might have some very strong disagreements about the way to get it done, but I would say there's a lot of positives here. And I know Nick and Jeannie are really, they are bound and determined to move things in a better direction. I really believe that. They are making, they are making a lot of efforts to do that. So the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the principals, it's our job to hold the staff and the co- and extracurricular people accountable. That's, that's our job. When those jobs start crossing over, what happens is you have dysfunction. And dysfunction's not a good thing. And we need to discipline ourselves, to stay in our roles, and so on. And yes, it's unfortunate that sometimes we need a solicitor to help us out, and we've even talked about, well, do we need to have Mr. Walker here more often? Unfortunately, if we have him here more often, he's on the clock, ka-ching, ka-ching, and we're making, we're enriching their law firm even more. I would prefer that, you know, again, that, as was much more articulately stated better than I, that if we could somehow all coexist with one another and respect one another and do a better job of listening as best as we can and so on. But I appreciate what you're saying. Question?
Yes. I agree with Dr. Moyer. Jeff Henry, first off, I want to say thank you, sir. Hats off to everything you said earlier and everything you do, so. My question is actually for you. Can you explain the process of the search for finding a permanent superintendent here?
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that question. So guys, I do have another commitment at the rec park, so I am ready to go whenever we find somebody. And I'm hopeful, because, I'm going to go ahead and say it, perception and reality, because of some of the issues we've had at the apex of the organization, on the board and the general public, there's a perception out there that Littlestown is not an attractive place to come and work. And that's unfortunate. And I know there's several teachers here in this district that are somewhat embarrassed and so on. But I told the people that are going to do our search, Mark DiRocco and Connie Kenler, I am willing to really sell this district, because I will tell you, by and large, we have strengths and weaknesses like anybody else, but by and large, this is a very good school district. And we have a lot of good teachers and coaches and advisors and so on. And we've got a passionate board that, once they get rolling here a little bit, I think they're going to be okay and turning that corner. But I would also say, and I have to commend our board president, who has, because of his attention to detail, believe it or not, because Dr. Mitchell left when he did, Nick reading the fine print saw that if that person that was chosen left within a certain timeframe, that the search has, the search has to be redone free of charge, which probably saved the district about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. So thank you, Nick Love. That's certain, they plan to meet with us in early November to go over with the board and kind of what they're looking for and things like that. And then they're thinking that generally, other people that are out there that might be interested over the holidays, like Thanksgiving and Christmas and so on, that gives them time to put their credential packets together, and then hopefully, we're going to get some really good candidates. I think Dr. Berryman is also a really good candidate, frankly. I'll just, I'm going to say that publicly right now. But then we'll see how that goes, and hopefully, we get some quality candidates. We will see where it is in the end, and then I will ski daddle out of here. So thank you for that question, but I do want to commend our board president for holding that search committee accountable for that and finding that in the fine print. Suzanne?
Wait, he's, he was a long time ago. I'm sorry. He's had his hand up.
I'm sorry, Suzanne, I'll get you next.
My apologies. I'm an alumni, uncle, they student in the district. I have a couple of questions. Can I get some clarification on, does the school board, once elected, have to follow any type of code of conduct?
We have code of conduct policy, yes.
All right, is that available anywhere to read?
Policy, zero, one, one, policy eleven, available on the website.
All right, and can I get a little bit of clarification on the school district policy on smoking and vaping?
Not permitted on school grounds.
Not permitted on...
Not permitted on the school grounds? Alright, just wanted to know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I understand only one of you was on the previous board that approved the elementary and combined middle and high school building projects. Um, that I believe required about ninety-two million dollars in bonds. That accounts for about ten percent of our annual budget to pay that off. So, you know, I know you guys weren't part of that, so I'd like to address things that you, you can't blame on others nor take credit for accomplishments that this board had nothing to do with. I repeatedly asked, with no response, why you haven't done more to balance the budget, not have these huge, uh, budget deficits, by making the hard-spending decisions that truly prioritizes education. So, to get away from generic assertions that we often hear without support, let's get into specifics. When it comes to general education, why has the board majority approved budgets that reduce classroom positions and increase administration and central office positions? That's part one. Part two, when it comes to special education, why did the board approve a budget relying on the rainy day on assigned funds for the autism classroom? And that's just for the first year. Yet approved, uh, I'll be my middle schooler, six, seven hundred thousand dollars for athletic fields, maybe even more when we get the final, uh, bids. And then third, when it comes to career tech education, why did the board majority decide to limit this year's career tech expansion investment to a hundred eighty thousand dollars instead of three hundred and sixty thousand, but approved six point three million dollars in facility projects instead of limiting the scope to maybe just a total of, I don't know, two million to match the one million dollar grant? Thank you.
Uh, Suzanne, those are good questions. I, I don't have enough history here to be able to respond to that.
No, I know you do, but I've asked them five or times.
Board, board members, I'll, I'll open it up to you all.
That was like, a bunch of questions.
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of the, the boards made decisions over the past, I mean, however, but we've, we've made our decisions, we voted, we deliberated at the time of our vote, um, and we have said why we do things. Uh, the fiscal responsibility is one of the largest components to being a board member. It's very, uh, it's a very difficult role to balance, uh, the community and the taxpayers with the needs of the students and the staff and the facilities here. Uh, we try to do the best job that we are able to keep your real estate taxes as low as possible while we're doing our due diligence and supporting, uh, our school district. I...
Nick, would you also say that you take recommendations from the administration, the business department, the superintendent, assistant superintendent? I, I'm thinking maybe if I, if I can get Suzanne to meet with maybe, uh, Tom Showbaker and I, he might be have, he'll have a lot more historical. Now, maybe, maybe we can help out and, and provide some of that information for you.
We do, we, we, we take those recommendations, we vet them, we, if the board comes to its own decision. And, and to be honest and truthful, I, I'm unsure of how, uh, we would do the things that, uh, I mean, we've expl- Mr. Showbaker, Dr. Mitzel, Dr. Bell have all explained the process in, uh, budgeting, how, uh, a lot of times you end up with a deficit in the budget and then a surplus at the end. Uh, that's been explained multiple times over the last two years. However, I, I'm unsure of how that and the other things, uh, Ms. Johnson, that you've raised would be accomplished unless you were to raise taxes.
No, I don't think you need to raise taxes. And I said, I've asked these things very specifically at meeting after meeting after meeting, and you do not, you do not give your reason for why you vote. So, I will, again, you've made, oh, please let me finish my question. You've made generic, like, again, you're making a generic assertion. I asked very specific questions, so let me ask them one at a time. When it comes to general education, why are you reducing classroom positions and increasing administration and central office positions?
So, enrollment has been declining. They, one of the ways that the school district, um, saves budgetarily is through attrition. When we have positions that we no longer need to fill because the student population does not require, we eliminate positions.
But not central office positions?
I'm gonna, can I just finish? Well, uh, the central office positions that were added, one was the food service coordinator. That was part of the food service spend-down plan that the administration brought to us because we had a, a large excess in the food service account. So, we, they developed a food service spend-down plan that included new equipment purchases as well as the addition of a food service coordinator that can only, that money can only be spent on food service items. We cannot spend it in any other area of the budget. So, that money, to do that position, then takes a large load off of our business administrator and the other members of the business office that can then have more time and more resources to do other things for the district. So, that is the reason for that that is not being spent out of the general fund account that's being spent was funded by the food service account.
And they did just eliminate a, uh, a position in the office as well?
Uh, yes, we did at the, um, at, in the last budget. We eliminated a district office position that was vacant, that was, that was the previous position that Ms. Dooley, our food service coordinator, helped. And it was restructured into personnel and insurance coordinator. The board saw the ability to reallocate those duties, and we cut that position. So, there was no, so at the end of all of that, there's no net position added to the general fund budget. There's actually one dropped.
And all that is discussed in our committee meetings and then our work sessions when we bring, when the committees bring things to the food board to vote, we discuss it in the work session. And then sometimes, there's also discussion long before we vote in the regular session. So, we, three opportunities that we are discussing all this, we don't want anybody to vote. And that is put on the Littlestown School District's website, that the, the, um, the audio can listen to.
And were there any other central office positions? That, that you're saying?
Well, no, I mean, you, I would think that you could combine, my suggestion would be to combine some things, like, you eliminated, um, transportation. Why don't you combine food service and transportation? That's just one example, but...
Food service is outsourced too.
Exactly. They're both outsourced, so I would, I would say could, you could look into combining, just like...
They're, they're both under their business manager, John Showbaker.
Right. So, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying combine them.
They are.
Just like, no, combine.
The food service money cannot be spent. We had to create that position to spend it down.
And we said, and that's why we said that.
Mr. Your has been recognized. Yes, thank you.
One of the things that is important to understand is in this position in consolidation, there are federal requirements that, with the food service, that you have to be in compliance with the, all the, uh, federal guidelines for nutrition and food and calories. You put all that together, so, somebody has to be very proficient to meet our guidelines that were required by law in the food services. Okay? So, that's one thing. Now, part of what I think you were addressing on the ACTI, the, uh, the funding issue. Right now, we have an issue with trying to get this project moving forward. There's a lot of unknowns. There's land, there's things that, um, all kinds of issues that have to go through government processes, through township approval, redesignating, uh, land that has agricultural use to school use. So, there's so many unknowns right now that our committee, budget committee, felt that it was more favorable to keep the money in the taxpayers' pocket and not put that money aside until, excuse me, until we get a sense of movement so that the taxpayers can get behind, as well as industry, as well as, um, businesses that was cash division to be able to see in this tech school really moving forward. We all support the Adams County Technical Institute. We are fully in support of it.
We, we are voting the original one percent, a hundred and eighty thousand every year. So, we're still doing that every year. Yeah, it's just the project hasn't gone anywhere.
But we...
And the ACTI program is not going anywhere. Just because of last meeting, we voted as a board, we were not giving the accurate information. We asked questions. Um, there was an ACTI meeting, what, almost two weeks ago this week? Um, we didn't get a lot of information. The ACTI program as is, just because we didn't vote for this big, huge, multimillion-dollar expansion is not affecting our students. We are still gonna have the tech program. Our students are still going to get to go to ACTI. It just might look different in the future, but we're not taking programs away from our students. We're not depleting that. It is moving forth. Would we love to do more? Absolutely. But we, as a board, and I can't speak, hey, me personally, I can't speak on everybody, but it seems like that in the discussion, we just could, did not feel comfortable moving forth with the unknowns financially for our students, for the, it's not just us, but it's all of the schools. Uh, we were given misinformation, um, that was, came, came to light at the last meeting that we voted on as well. So, please know that some of the things that you're hearing out there on social media is not accurate. ACTI, our tech program, is not going away. Our students are not losing any programs. If anything, the goal is to make it better and bigger, but our students are not going to lose anything.
Thank you. I, I'd like to clarify, since you said the goal is to make it bigger and better, can I? You spoke across the...
I understood something she said because it's relevant to...
Yeah, and I, can I, you had a turn, she had a turn. Can I respond, please? Um, what I said was, you know, if your goal is to make it bigger and better, because we all agree it's important, we all agree that our community needs it, we all agree that expansion's not as, as needed, we just don't know the specifics, why wouldn't we, in a reserve fund, put three hundred and sixty thousand into it, which is drops in the bucket of what it's gonna cost? I mean, at a minimum, it's gonna cost us a half million dollars a year, and we know that is too low. So, why wouldn't you put three hundred and sixty thousand in a reserve fund? I mean, you put six hundred thousand in a transportation reserve fund, and we don't even have transportation in our district anymore. But, and you put six point three million dollars above the ninety-two million that are already spent on these buildings, but you couldn't put three hundred and sixty thousand for the expanded, whatever it looks like in the future, to the side, like the rest of us do. We save for our future investments. Why wasn't that important enough? But the six point three million dollars and the, you know, all these other things was, what was very important that you all...
The six point three million isn't, we're not spending that. We just have our projects in the future.
No, six point three million for the facility grant projects is what I'm talking about.
I'm, I'm gonna respond, and then we're going to...
Move on to the next question. Thank you.
Um, the, uh, ACTI, the reason why I believe that the board did not move forward with that, and it was not recommended to move any current funds into the ACTI account by the business department, is because that's one-time money. The business office did not recommend that.
Yes, they did. That's inaccurate. Tom recommended it.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Tom did recommend it. I pulled the slides.
Suzanne, let, let him finish his statement. He listened to you.
Okay.
Being a bully.
Um, I'm not being inaccurate. The, the administration recommended a tax increase for ACTI. They did not recommend taking money that we already have and putting it in a separate account. The board moved it down to tax increases. It, it, every year, at minimum, if it was, I think the number was, if it's a forty million dollar project, it's gonna be a heck of a lot more than a forty million dollar project at the way things are going. The numbers we're hearing is seventy to eighty million dollars. And there's still no plan. There's, there's no plan at all. But, it, a forty million dollar project, it was a five hundred thousand dollar a year payment. To put three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in, that's not even gonna cover one payment. But three hundred and sixty thousand dollars can do a lot here in Littlestown in the interim time between now and whenever ACTI comes to fruition, if it ever does. So, that's why you don't take one-time money and try to allocate it for an every-year, year-after-year expense. So, that's, it was not recommended by the business department. It does not make financial sense to do that. They wanted a tax increase so that you have every-year money. But at this point in time, when the board did not see a clear plan for ACTI, that was not the financial prudent that did it.
Thank you. Next question.
Hi, my name's Dawn. Um, I have two kids in elementary school. And my question was, I'm trying to get some more information about the food program in the school. Um, I can't speak for the middle school or high school because my kids aren't in there yet, but, um, just as far as the elementary school goes, I was wondering, um, why do we not have an option to have any type of, like, hot lunches or hot? I guess some of them are hot, but, um, specifically, like, the breakfast, I, I think that it's a great idea to have, you know, the program for free breakfast and all that. And I know that there's a lot that goes into it with the federal regulations and all of the things that you have to do for nutrition. But I was just wondering, we have great programs with, uh, rec park, and I, I mean, we live in, in agricultural center.[1543.04] But I was just wondering, we have great programs with Rec Park and I, I mean, we live in an agricultural center and, I mean, I know that there's so many people that have eggs and, you know, just all of it. So I guess my question is, what goes into those decisions as far as providing, you know, maybe healthier options for our kids in school?
Dr. Berryman, are you comfortable with that? I'm guessing we need to talk to the Chartwells person and our elementary principals on that as well.
So did you stay after, give me your name and number, I can get back to you. That's something I have to take through Max now. He's our director through Chartwells as to what guidelines they follow. I know that a lot of times for breakfast, they do the cold grabbing though, because the kids eat in their classrooms. So they go to the, they go to the cafeteria, they grab it, and they go back to their classrooms to eat K to twelve. I mean, the high school sometimes looks at the cafeteria, they cause them to eat in their classroom. So I will, I wrote your questions down, so if you stay after, give me your name and number.
Your questions. Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so the, I travel a lot for work, so I like to be involved in the school board. The challenge that I have is that the audio, visual, video is atrocious and Facebook Live is not ideal as a model who doesn't use Facebook. So one, can we have an option that's not Facebook, and two, can we actually make it work so people can hear it?
I, I think I may have addressed this as part of my superintendent's report. You, you are a hundred percent right. Our IT department, and, and Dr. Berryman, correct me if I misspeak on this, our IT department was trying to do this on the cheap. At Gettysburg School District, where I'm a board member there, they spent a lot of money to get high-level equipment, and it, it goes pretty good, the audio and the visual. We believe with the help of our ID department, our IT department, we believe we have it solved, we believe we have it solved, and the last one actually turned out okay. Did you have a chance to check that one out?
No, because I have to wait for my wife to give me Facebook, you know, like...
I understand, I understand.
Can we move you on Facebook?
I, I think, I think you're going to find it is new and improved. If, if it continues to be challenges that way, I, I just want you to know, our IT team, I think, is being unjustly criticized because we're not giving them the resources and the equipment to make that happen.
Yeah, I don't care who does it, I just...
Right. If it, if it continues, I'm going to challenge the board to go ahead and bite, bite the bullet and, and, because I think it is important for transparency issues and for the community and for people that aren't able to attend the board meetings. And, and by the way, we're, we're hoping in the future to have more boring board meetings, not so exciting. What, did I misspeak?
No, you didn't misspeak, I just want to add, we have, we are currently exploring the option of YouTube to, to stream there. In addition to, or instead of Facebook, so that, that is a possibility. We're trying to do things sort of one step at a time and not overwhelm the system. We, to be candid, our former superintendent threw a piece of equipment on our staff last minute, at last minute with the addition of the camera last month that we didn't know about until the day of. And so they, that's why that whole situation didn't quite work very well when the, when the camera was first introduced. So now, now you have the video there as well, we got the audio sorted out, that turned out to be an, an audio problem with a piece of the audio equipment. We had, as, as you went up towards the beginning of my interview, we had the administration give quotes on a professional sound system for the boardroom and some video live streaming equipment. And they ranged from thirty thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars to, for the specifics, systems that they quoted us. I can only tell you what they gave us. I can't say whether that was the cheapest place to look or the most cost-effective or whatever. We, we don't go and solicit bids on our own. That's not a proper thing to do. And so from that point, we have to take that and every member of the board, at least every member that's currently sitting here, they can correct me if I'm wrong, voted against the, that cost. Because we feel like that money is far better spent in the school district on our students than at the boardroom.
It's way more cost-effective.
I, I, I believe that there are...
I mean, can you use somebody's cellphone and just like, send that to YouTube and then just like hyperlink it to the, to the, to the Littlestown...
Littlestown Council had a five thousand...
So we don't know what system we...
I, I would agree that, I believe that they're all, most effective things that are probably out there. I think that they were looking at doing it similar to how Gettysburg has theirs, with a professional video in the back. They have microphones at each board member's table, they have a microphone at the podium, and they were also looking at the potential for the system to be mobile so that you, so that other places in the district could use it and it wouldn't be stationary to the boardroom. However, there are other alternatives out there. This board being very cost-conscious, we have been slow to spend taxpayer money on something that we're hoping that we're able to work out with minimum expense possible. So as we continue, and I, I told this to Dr. Moyer after the last one, I said, if this camera does not work, this meeting, we're shutting it down, and we're going to have to go back to the drawing room. We think that we're at a place to where there, to me, the audio has gotten back to the quality that it was before when it was solely audio, and now it's video.
I don't think people said the audio was good.
Well, I don't think the audio's ever been great.
Last word on that. Go ahead.
I, I have a different question, a different topic. Is that okay?
I, I guess we'll make an exception.
I'll keep going.
No, no, go ahead.
So earlier this year, there was a pretty serious situation at Aloe Creek that I think was just kind of ignored, and there was a kill list that was created. And we were, we heard about this, and as a parent of a kid in that classroom, it was alarming to learn about this from other parents who said they were interviewed about this, and then literally nothing came out. So I'm just curious if all of the parents who had this interview, why, like, this wasn't a social media thing, because I'm not on social media.
Dr. Berryman, do you know anything at all about that?
It hasn't come to the board level, so we don't know what we're talking about.
And I'm sorry, I have no history on that.
I will have to look into that.
You said Aloe Creek, so...
Yeah.
There was something fourth grade, so that's...
When?
Sometime in the fall.
This, this year?
Yeah. Yeah, within the last sixty days, kind of.
Did you speak to Ms. Moran?
Did you call the police?
No, because it was like, I assumed the school wouldn't say something at some point or another, because it was like, so what are you guys doing about this?
So there's a chain of command you have to go through with you for...
Oh, and then the kill list, the chain of command.
And so a lot of things don't ever get...
That would go right to the top.
Unless it's in that chain of command or somebody in the community tells us, so it never came to the board, so we don't know what to do.
I'll, I'll see what I can find out about that.
Can we just speak reality for a second?
Call the police.
If that's a concern, the authorities should be called, like, number one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right away? Authorities, please?
Uh, I would be very surprised if Mr. Moran, and, and did not take immediate action on that. We do have a local celebrity here, I just wanted to give him a minute before. Dan, I appreciate you coming tonight. Dan is our staff member representative for the teachers and so on, and he's been here quite a while and so on. Dan, would you, just in general regarding the morale of our staff and, and so many general thoughts or advice that you have for our group here? Because I, you're highly, this guy's got a lot of credibility with our professional staff, and I, and I appreciate the relationship that we've developed in such a short time. And actually, full disclosure, I know him from a previous life.
Long time ago. My name's Dan Lawrence, I'm one of the health and PE teachers at the high school. I'm also, I've been twenty-nine years in education, twenty-one here at Littlestown, thirteen as the teacher association president. I'm very proud of this district. I'm proud of everything that's happened here. I graduated from Delone in nineteen ninety-one, and that kind of made me the enemy at, at least at the, at the start. I am, I was in this, I was in this auditorium twenty-one years ago when I got my bolt pin. And I never really thought about it until just, you know, several years ago, when I went to a Littlestown and Delone football game, and, you know, somebody asked me, who, who am I going to root for, you know, who am I rooting for? Thankfully, I stood in the end zone, I usually stand in the end zone for games and things like that. But I'm vested here, very vested here, not so much there anymore. Your students that you've entrusted us with over the years, over the last twenty-one years, I think, one of the guys that was here was a former, was a former student of mine, that's starting to date back, and I'm starting to have many of their children as they're coming through, as I know with many of the, many of the board members. I'm proud to be here, I'm proud to teach here, we do fantastic things here with your kids, one million percent. I've been asked a number of times, why don't I speak up at board meetings, or why don't I ask the board certain things? I've only addressed the board in my thirteen years two times via a letter, and it was just to say that, you know, a lot of times, some of the infighting and some of the things that go on don't help make our job any easier. The easiest part of, of teaching is being with your kids every day. That's the easy part. The hard part is managing, managing the adult and the bureaucracy and things like that that go on. None of that's going to change my opinion, none of, of, of what we do here and what we do for all of our kids. The gentleman that left here a little earlier was, was absolutely right. There is, there, there is a way to figure this all out. We're all good people, we're all, we all have, we all have, are passionate about certain things, and that would just be my, you know, moving forward, my hope for the board and for our community is to, you know, realize that we're all here for, for the safety and education of our students first and foremost. And if we can, I, I've listened to board meetings and have been happily bored when we just go about things. You all can disagree on, you know, on the finances, on everything else. I don't get involved because one of the deals I've made with Dr. Moyer and Dr. Mitzel and Dr. Bell and Mr. Bigger and Dr. Wills, you know, several years ago, is that I'll do my best to take care of our staff and the things they're doing in the classroom, and you all can take care of, you know, take care of each other. I never want to see any adults ruin things for our, you know, ruin things for our kids. And I think really despite some of the negative presses, we have so many good things going on here with our students. And that has to be, that has to be laid back at the board's, at the board's feet too, because you do allow those things to happen. So I appreciate that, it's the last thing I need to say unless there's a question for me. But I'm happy, I am happy to, I was going to do this at the end of last year. I, I do want to, I do meet with Dr. Moyer monthly. I will, I am willing to meet with board leadership, even on a quarterly basis, last thing you need is another meeting, but I'm certainly available. If there is ever a question on what our staff believes or what our staff thinks or what we feel, or how we, you know, how we plan to respond or react to anything, I'm not limited in my speech, I'll happily tell you. Anybody that knows me knows that I'll give you my opinion on anything at any time, and I'm absolutely willing to do that with each and every one of you, and I appreciate it.
Dan, thank you. Thank you. We've been here quite a while.
Not quick.
No, 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 you don't have to be quick, but ask your question, and then I want to do one final activity to, to wrap this up. And then if you were not, if you, if you're like me and you leave here tonight and you're thinking, darn, I wish I would have asked that or whatever, I want you to, I want you to contact us and ask that, and we will try to get back to you in a timely manner. So one final question, then I, then I have an activity for the board that I'm going to put them through for you, and then your torture is over tonight.
So I have a question at the end, but I also have a general statement. My intention to come tonight is certainly not to feel bullied or put down. My name is Angelina Brumgarde, I have two children in the district, I know most of you, I voted for most of you, actually, all of you, everyone that's here that's been voted, I voted for you. If you aren't happy with who is here, then run. You run. You make the...